Ready to go. Just not warm enough for everybody.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
Heater for two days or something.
It's like ninety degrees though. They're kids.
The pool water is getting, it's getting warm enough by itself.
Thank you. Yeah, I told my mom. Thanks for the love.
Can we do that first?
Yes.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you.
Are so quiet.
No idea. No clue.
That doesn't help.
Two. Oh, financial picture.
You ready?
Please rise and pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of
Almighty, everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Thank you. Your roll call, please.
Roll call, Mr. Belisco.
Here.
Joining us by phone, Mrs. McClay.
Present.
Mr. Mearon.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Also in attendance is Controller Tony Thomas, Administrator Charlie McCormick, Assistant City Attorney Maureen Collins, Administrative Assistant Lisa Sample. We have a presentation before we get started.
Whereas Mont Platell is a senior at Wilkes-Barre Area High School in the valedictory of his class, and whereas Mr. Platell moved from Virginia to the United States with his family in 2004, and whereas Mr. Platell tutors classmates in various subjects, takes advanced placement courses, is stage manager for drama productions, president of the FBLA and Spanish National Honor Society, a member of, member of the Senior Committee and supervisor for A D tutors, whereas Mr. Platell is on top of his high school extracurriculars, has been taking classes at his Earn County Community College and will earn an associate's degree in history in May, whereas Mr. Platell's hard work and dedication is being recognized by King's College, which has awarded him with a presidential scholarship, which will pay his tuition in full. The award is in recognition of his exemplary leadership, scholastic achievement, and community service. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of Wilkes-Barre hereby congratulate Mr. Platell in his accomplishments and wishes him success in the future.
All right. Okay, this evening we have two resolutions and one ordinance on the agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any of those? Angel?
Sam, I think.
Angel Mathis, Wilkes-Barre. My question is, okay, for the Rock in the River, I do understand why you do that, and I know Sam Troy is going to come up and say, must you do it, but yes, it is actually sponsored by a beverage company, and it's the county. The county has to ask you guys for the dispensation of suspending that ordinance in order to have it because it's in Wilkes-Barre City. So vote yes. But now my question is with the transfer of the liquor license to Public Square, how is that going to affect the businesses around it? Because we already have the liquor license at the Anthracite, which, you know, it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare. Is there going to be a higher clientele, or is it going to be migrating between the two? And my only concern is only because when the facilities are not available to those who frequent them, they have a tendency of coming to the senior center. And senior center doesn't have a public bathroom.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, we're gonna, I know Attorney Hagan is going to be presenting. He has comments on the pending legislation that you're just speaking about, so we can bring you up next, sir, if it's all right with you. Maybe you can answer the questions that were just posed.
Mr. Chairman, how would you like me to proceed this evening? Would you like me to answer the questions that were asked? Because I also came.
Maybe to start with, you could introduce the owners, they were not here on Tuesday. I know we covered quite a bit of information on Tuesday. I don't think you need to cover that again, but maybe just address the specific questions that were brought up by the citizens there.
Are we on the record?
You are, sir.
Okay, all right. Would you state your name?
Identify yourselves.
My name is John Cantos.
C-A-N-T-O-S. And are you an owner of La Chosa Del Sabor LLC?
Yes, I'm one of them.
And is, the restaurant that you opened is an American and typical Ecuadorian food restaurant, correct?
Yes.
And you brought a sample menu. May I push?
Sure. Please. Now, some of us haven't had dinner yet, so this might be a problem.
Tantalizing. Maybe we'll adjourn to, anyway. When did you open the restaurant?
We opened December 22nd of last year.
Okay. And would you describe, just in your own words, your, the kind of restaurant you're running?
Well, it's a, well, it's a family-owned and family-run restaurant. My grandpa and my mom are chefs, and I also run the, the table and the seats. Outside, I'm the manager of it.
How many chairs, how many seats? How many customers can you have in the restaurant?
We can have at least forty-two seating.
But physically, how many seats do you have?
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yeah, forty-two.
And do you have your own men's and ladies' room in the facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And your intended operation, days of operation, are they seven days a week?
Probably it's gonna be six.
What day will you be closed?
Probably, right now we're closing Monday, but we'll probably start closing Wednesdays.
Okay. And you've applied for a liquor license with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board?
Yes.
Okay. And we're here because you want to transfer the one that you were able to find in Luzerne County from Edwardsville to Wilkes-Barre, right?
Yes.
Okay. What are your intended hours of operation? I told them what I thought it was, but I think I may have been off a little bit. What are the hours, intended hours of operation?
Well, it will be from lunch during the week, it will be from lunch to ten o'clock, and weekends, from lunch to eleven o'clock.
Okay. So 11:00 PM that way?
Eleven PM, yeah.
And you said you run a family-style restaurant. Are you going to allow a customer to walk in off the street and buy alcohol to go?
No, definitely. The only reason we're getting, we're trying to get a license for liquor is to eat there, to eat with the food.
So when a customer comes in and they order a drink, they'll consume the food and the alcohol on the premises, and they won't leave with any alcohol?
Exactly, yeah.
Questions?
I do. So your menu has breakfast? Are you planning on changing your hours?
Yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Anyone? Okay. I believe that may be all we need, unless you have something else.
Kathy, you asked us, I think, for some information, including copies of the letters and the certified, the proof of certified, and then you asked us for a check, not a hundred dollars. Any other questions?
No, we certainly wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
So I don't have a question for them, but I do have a question for Maureen. If in six months they decide they want to do takeout, to go alcohol, is that something that their liquor license allows them to change? Or is that something we can make sure that doesn't happen?
Maybe, do you know Attorney Hagan helped with the liquor license, the procedure? Maybe you could answer her question.
Well, as, I'm not an expert on Pennsylvania liquor control rules and regulations, but I've been doing this for thirty-five years. I think every license holder.
Attorney, can we get you to speak into the microphone?
I think that every license holder is allowed to sell, take away, or take out alcohol and food. In this case, you've had the direct testimony.
Right.
This is for consumption on premises only. Are they going to change their mind? Well, I think people change their mind all the time, but he's made a commitment to you to, and he's advised of the circumstances that are happening at Anthracite. Anthracite's right next door.
Right.
You know, and so he doesn't want that, he don't want, he doesn't want to replicate that, number one, and number two, he wants to have respectable, family-run and owned, operated, to serve the community. That's what he's doing.
Thank you.
I hope that answers your question.
It does.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on pending legislation? Okay.
Sam.
Oh, sorry. I thought you left. You probably know where I stand on these issues. I speak out on them every time. I don't see, first of all, this presentation was handled Tuesday as well as tonight, is that? That's not par for the course, though, is it, Bill? I mean. It's a public hearing, yes. It was advertised.
It was advertised public hearing for liquor license transfer.
Public hearing? Well, let me just say, I urge council to vote against this resolution, the two resolutions, I guess it would be, right? As you know, I teetotal myself, I don't drink, that's not the reason. Whatever rationalization you can give here regarding the serving of alcoholic beverages and the transfer of this liquor license. We have enough establishments on Public Square and in the vicinity here, if you want to call them beer gardens or bars or whatever, even Frank's News serves booze, I see now. I mean, where does it end? Do you, do you guys, maybe you guys can counter my argument, repudiate what I say? That's a good word, right, Tony?
It's a pending.
You know, maybe I'm on the wrong track here. Do we need another establishment that serves beer, Tony, or booze, to offer booze? Do they really need this to enhance their business? I don't think so. Because, remember the last time I quoted a statistic? I don't know if this still holds. Sixty-seven counties in the state, did you know that, Stan?
Yes, I did.
We were ranked seventh egregiously in terms of, I don't know how they ranked it, but alcoholism, alcoholism and alcoholic-related problems, seventh. You know, not, not seventh from the bottom, but seventh from the top in terms of having a number of problems. I don't think that's changed very much, I don't know. That should give you cause enough to at least put this business about transferring the liquor license on the back burner. As far as the other instance goes, with the Rock in the River, suspending the alcohol ordinance for that, maybe you can, you can straighten me out on this. Now, I mean, look, I don't oppose concerts, I think they're great. I mean, if it enhances, you know, if it brings people to the city and makes them, and induces them to spend money on the city and spur the economy to a certain small extent, well, that's good. But do you really need booze to be served there? I mean, to what extent? I don't know how this worked last year, but I just wonder, you know, how do they enforce, well, I guess the twenty-one thing, they can card people, right? I don't know. They don't, they do card? But how do they prevent, like in a bar? If you're visibly intoxicated, they're not supposed to serve you, that's a law, right? That's, that's a law in Pennsylvania? How do they enforce that law over there? They really going to enforce that? I don't think so. How do you, wait, how do you measure? Can you answer me this, anybody on council? How do you measure the effects, the insidious effects, the subtle effects that this, that serving booze at this concert can have? People could get a little bit over, a little bit tipsy, and maybe go home and hit their wives or something, assuming they're males, and they think they're macho, or they can get in a car accident or something. You can't measure that, and yet, if I'm not mistaken, to some extent, the city could be held responsible for that. I don't think your insurance would cover that, would it? I mean, I don't know. Suppose somebody gets in, goes to a rock concert, and, and to this Rock in the River thing, and gets overly intoxicated, and has a car accident later in which somebody's severely hurt, injured because of this fact, this person was overly drunk, visibly intoxicated. Could the city be held responsible to a certain extent for serving that booze? I mean, is it totally, I mean, I think, I've seen instances where that, where the city could not be rendered harmless in that. So, I mean, that's another side to this, besides the moral question here. I mean, I guess I'm dealing from a different set of cards here, you know, my ethics are different from everybody's. But I look out there and, you know, I see a lot of, a lot of people suffering, and it's not all their fault, you know, Alcoholic Anonymous meeting right down the street from a friend of mine in Kingston, it's, I think it's a problem that's, it's going to be with us forever. And I don't, I think to some extent, it might, a small extent at least, try to deal with it at least, at least by voting no on the suspension of this liquor license, sorry, the transfer of the liquor license and the suspension of the ordinance, which God knows, why have an ordinance in the first place if every time you have an event, the liquor license is suspended, I mean, liquor license, the alcoholic ordinance is suspended? Thank you.
Can I ask, I'm gonna be, by your comments, it appears as though you've never attended one of these Rock in the River events.
What's that, Bill?
By your comments and your questions, it appears as though you haven't attended any of these events previous, in previous years. So I'm gonna presume that you haven't. It is very well-run, organized, there is, you cannot get into the facility through that portal without getting a wristband placed on your wrist if you're over the age of twenty-one. You cannot purchase anything if you're under the age of twenty-one without a wristband. There's sheriff's office.
How about visibly intoxicated, that sort of thing?
They, I, I have been to, no.
Never seen.
Stan, wait a minute. Hold on a second. Believe me, if there's any place that you want to misbehave, that's not the place.
Yes.
There's sheriffs, sheriff, deputy sheriffs all over, city police officers all over, and it is extremely well-run.
But why do you need booze? So the suppliers can make money?
Hold on one second.
It's an ethical question, don't you think?
I understand your position as far as alcohol, but that particular event is extremely well-run. You can go to the Mohegan Sun Arena or anyplace else to Kirby Center and purchase an alcoholic drink and sit and watch a show. Unfortunately, or for whatever, for whatever reason, you don't necessarily agree with that, and I understand that, and that's your prerogative, but this event, we're very comfortable, at least I am, with the way it's run. I've seen it, I've, we've been there. It is extremely well-run, and we're very happy that it's part of our events during the summer.
I had a feeling you wouldn't agree with me, but.
No.
Sam, I want to address the insurance, Sam. The insurance, we addressed it on Tuesday, so the city is not held liable on that. The vendors sign, and it goes under their insurance.
And it's what, Jessica?
It goes under the vendor.
Oh.
So that the city is not held liable.
I see. Thank you.
Anyone else on that?
Okay, anyone else on pending legislation? Okay, Kathy, yours.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second on the consent agenda, which will be the two resolutions and the minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mearon. Mr. Belisco?
Yes.
Mrs. McClay?
Yes, and I just want to add, though, that I really am going to trust your testimony that it's not going to become a takeout. I mean, I just want to state that, that I, I really do hope that in six months to a year, I, it's not a takeout and it stays in-house. So I vote yes.
Mr. Mearon?
I vote yes as well.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
And we have one ordinance, which is filed Council Number Two of 2024, which is regarding the flood plain management, and we need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Brooks.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McClay. Mr. Belisco?
Yes.
Mrs. McClay?
Yes.
Mr. Mearon?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
And Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
For the business.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Belisco, anything for us this evening?
Nothing since Tuesday, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Mrs. McClay?
I do. So I actually came down North Washington Street today, Charlie. The three hundred to the, well, between Butler and North Street, there's pretty much potholes going all the way up and down North Washington. Thank you. I'm good.
Mr. Mearon?
No, no, everything was resolved by email this, this week. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Brooks?
So, in the continuing saga of these feather flappy flags, we have had success, but then, what's the expression you used, Charlie? Whack-a-mole? Right? They just keep coming back up again. So we just need to continue to inform and educate the store owners and other people who have these signs. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas, anything this evening?
Just something for Charlie, on my way over here.
Mind if I put your microphone, sir? If you don't mind.
So Mike can hear you.
You're giving me potholes now?
Please just jump. Only because I was, you know, aware of it on my way over here by someone, Spring Street.
It's gonna be redone.
Redone, okay. They, I told him I thought it was on one of the lists, but, but other than that.
Bill asked on Tuesday, and I did check on that bill, and they have a full redo on that.
Thank you, sir.
Which should start, oh, I'm not gonna tell you when it's gonna start, but in the next, in the next week or two it's supposed to, so it's just imminent there. They're waiting for one other issue on one of the lines.
Okay, thank you. And all of us, thank you for going up and taking a look at that situation we talked about in Georgia Avenue. I appreciate that very much. Okay, Mr. Troy, back up, sir, if you wish.
Comment?
Yes, sir.
I'm up?
Yes, sir. Leadoff hitter. Several issues to address. I don't suppose I can get a couple extra minutes, right, Mr. Barrett? For being a nice guy, or having a lot of issues to talk about, clock's already ticking, I guess I know. Well, I have a number of issues to address, unfortunately can't get them in within five minutes. I wanted to first call your attention, I don't think I need to call your attention too much to this issue, but we have something, we have a, an issue or a problem, as you can see, with climate change, and I think by now everybody realizes, all you gotta do is look at your, the plants you've got in the ground and see that they start to shoot up in February, and they bloom a month or two earlier in advance, and you see in a more crisis situation that, you know, we have, the summer is not even, what, about a month away, and temperatures are already sitting a record. So I just want to spend a brief amount of time saying that despite the fact that we have a mayor and a council who loves to spend money on various issues, they haven't spent it, in my opinion, in the right places. And one thing I've been trying to advocate for now and then is the need for a public, a community swimming pool. I don't think, I think that the splash pad that we have on Cole Street falls far short of that. At one time we had, believe it or not, you guys are mostly too young to remember, except for Mr. Barrett, we had four pools. Not the single you, I was being an old person.
Continue, I can allow you to continue despite that, go ahead.
But we, we had four swimming pools. We had Minor Park, we had Cole Street. We had Parish Street, right? What's, I'm missing one. Hillside, I think, was another one. They weren't all active at one time. Now we have nothing.
And then Hollenbeck, you missed Hollenbeck.
And Hollenbeck.
We had the five.
I'm glad you pointed that out. So I want to just briefly advocate to find, I understand from talking to our controller, who I'm, personally, I'm very happy that we have Mr. Thomas in as controller because there seems to be a more commitment and a conscientiousness on his part to look and, you know, see what the problems are financially and to do the best he can about it, whereas in past, our past controllers just pretty much ignored the issue, or didn't even show up for work in some cases. But I think that, you know, in terms of trying to find, maybe we should look into some possibilities there with the small amount, as far as I know, we do have a few million dollars left in the ARP funds, right, Bill? Or don't you know? I don't know if that's earning interest or it's all earmarked, but I think that you could find a certain, as I said, Kingston just renovated their pool a couple of years ago, spent a million bucks on that. You don't even have one pool here, and we got a population, what, about twenty thousand more than Kingston? Anyway, I think that council should make a concerted effort to advocate for the mayor, to the mayor for that. I want to just address in my closing amount of time, the issue of the rainwater, stormwater fee, because this is getting to be a disturbing issue. I just want to mention, I'm getting the impression that the whole thing is a scam, and I'm not saying any particular individuals whom I know, whether they're federal or state or local, are involved in this and is scam, but we're not getting anything for our money. Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority, for one thing, according to an article in a local paper here, written a few months ago, is very well-off getting a large amount of money. The city, Wilkes-Barre and other, the thirty, there are thirty municipalities that are members of the WSA, getting a large, a pretty sizable revenue stream from the WSA, which is supposedly used for projects like sewer repair, et cetera, but it's still counted as part of the budget, which I can't understand. It's a line item in the budget, three hundred and twenty thousand or whatever. I was discussing this with, with somebody today, and I still really, you know, I have more questions than answers here. And let me just say this, if, if people are being ripped off in the city, and we're still paying a sewer fee of fifty dollars, which is supposedly going into a sewer fund, but I don't think is, it's going into the general fund, something's rotten in Denmark or Wilkes-Barre that I think has to be looked into, because it's, it's a financial burden on every homeowner. I'm paying an extra sixteen dollars a quarter in addition to the sanitary connection, for what? And I talked to the, just for your knowledge, your own knowledge, everybody, there's a Director of the Stormwater Fee Division in the WSA, his name is Cavella or something like that, even he told me that there's no endgame in sight. This thing is gonna go, last forever and ever, on infinite items till we all drop dead, and what's accomplished? He says very little. The Chesapeake, the Susquehanna's not being cleaned up, neither is the Chesapeake, very little progress. So consider what I've said, I don't have any time to expand on that, I guess I'm finished. I don't know if anybody have any comment on it? What do you think, Jessica? Can we do something about this? Form a commission or something?
I, I believe you've been told before, that is, we did not implement that. That is something that the federal government has implemented, we cannot, I mean, it's much, I don't want to pay it either.
Right.
We cannot change it, so that is something.
So what can we?
Marty Flynn's got an office downstairs, I believe he's here a couple days a week. I would direct you there.
Well, it's disturbing. Okay. Anyone else?
Thanks for your attention.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
That's it. Angel Mathis?
I got a couple, I got a stool attendant. Is that yours?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's my Band-Aid.
Oh, boy.
The first thing I have is that, you know, on, in my area, we have an ongoing issue with squatters. And my thing is, I don't have a problem with homeless. Homeless will always be with us. They were with us in Bible times, and they will always be with us. That's not my issue, but homelessness does not give a rate for squatters to move into other people's homes and destroy them. And I say that because just within, I would say, a block radius of me, four homes have been torn down. And I bring this up because I can, I can honestly say that our police does, they do a wonderful job, because as I've always come, there is an issue with squatters at 489 South Franklin Street. And it just so happened that last week, someone actually opened the door, and the door was wide open for four hours. And at, because I'm like, okay, I thought I was seeing something, but I called 911. The police responded within fifteen minutes. And, you know, I never expected that. And it was very surprising, and I am, and, you know, that goes to Chief Coffee, that this is a commendation, not a, you know, that they did it, didn't have to wait, they came in, they got their flashlights, they looked through, and they closed the door and they left. But with that said, now we're starting to get shopping carts there again. And me personally, it brings down the neighborhood. Right now, we have the lot that, with the torn-down house, that needs the grass cut because the grass is higher than my granddaughter. And then you have the other three houses that was torn down behind the former Wyandotte Spirits, their grass is taller than my granddaughter. I'm just disappointed that, you know, nothing gives anyone the right to go in someone else's home and destroy it. But that, but like I said, you know, the response I did not expect, and it was a prompt response, and they deserve kudos. The second thing is trash. You know? I think it's just that there's too many people living on top of people living on top of people. And as I said, you know, I'm from Newark, New Jersey, never lived in a project, but where I am, I feel like I'm in a project. I lived in the projects here and didn't feel that way. You know, I know there's an apathy in this area now that has never been there before, but it's like trash, trash, and trash. It's like trash everywhere. Trash Day was today. I don't know what happened, but in front of one of the houses, it's like the bags exploded, literally exploded all over the tree line. And so, I don't know. And Mike, I hope you feel better and get well soon. Speedy recovery.
I can carry you too well. We're working on it.
Yeah. The, I don't know if you were finished or not.
I am.
Okay. The addresses where the high grass and, we have all that? We have it. Okay.